would start on that property, that plantings would be done trees.
Right.
And it's been over a year now and we're concerned that that work has not begun. We've reached out to the developers to ask questions of them and there have been some changes in who is in our contact person. He's no longer with the developer, so we continue to try to reach out but have not had luck in having them respond. We'll continue to do that. The question is, what's the best way for us to interface with the town when it becomes, I guess, an enforcement issue of a decision?
Right.
We've reached out to the planning board and Kristen's been very helpful in answering questions. Is that the best person for us to contact with as we need to ask further questions and want to pursue it, or is there someone else?
Steve, do you want to take this one?
I would suggest my office, the town manager's office.
Okay.
And then we could, you know, get the appropriate department to deal with that for you.
Okay, terrific, great. Then we'll reach out to you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right. Okay, any other assistance concerns? Excellent. Okay, chairman's update. So we are fast approaching Memorial Day, so the Memorial Day Parade is next Monday and I believe it leaves at 10:00 a.m. from the high school, but don't super quote me on that, so double check. And Peter Berry, who's not here tonight, will be the selectman representative, reading the names of any Acton veterans who've passed in the last year as our vice chair and resident veteran. There is a hearing on the Acton Center Traffic Study scheduled for Monday, June 1st, at 7:00 p.m. in this room, and this is a follow-up hearing to the one they believe was back in December sometime in the winter. And while I'm sure it feels very far off to the impending graduates, it happens before our next meeting, so just a peremptory congratulations to the Acton-Boxborough Regional High School seniors who will be graduating on June 5th. And I think that's all I have on my end, so Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you. First item, I think the board is aware, we have received a notice under Chapter 61A of a potential sale of the Choate property on Newtown Road. Because it was tax classified as Chapter 61A, the town has the right of first refusal. We have until July, excuse me, June 1st to determine if indeed it's a bona fide offer. Town Council is looking at that right now. Then we have 120 days to determine if we want to exercise our right of first refusal. So we are going through that process and doing our due diligence. We'll probably report back to the board at our next meeting what our findings are and whether, and we may want to have an executive session to discuss whether we want to entertain a right of first refusal. There may be some legal complications with this that we're also researching at the moment. Also wanted to make the board aware that the zoning enforcement officer, Scott Much, has resigned his position effective today, so wish Scott well. He's been here almost seven years, just a little after I came. And we'll be figuring out a process to replace him. There was a meeting in Worcester, DEP, with both Kirkware, the owner of the North Acton Sewer Treatment Plant, members of the Condo Association of Nagog Woods, and the town to talk about the North Acton Sewer Treatment Plant. There's, that sewer treatment plant is private. It services not only the Nagog Shopping Center, the condominiums, pretty much all of the Nagog area with the office parks, et cetera. DEP is looking to have some kind of formal legal entity take responsibility for that plant, and it's looking like they are either going to be favoring either the condo association to take it over or the town. There's a lot of due diligence that we have to look at, including looking at the finances, looking at the state of the plants, what the future capital needs may be. And I think at some point in June, possibly in another executive session, we need to talk about this whole situation with the board. There'd be a lot of hoops for the town to jump through to take this over, including at least three town meeting votes that I can think of. So there's a lot of things to consider. Also, last Tuesday, there was a hearing in front of the Joint Committee on Public Service on our local act to withdraw the police department from civil service. The bill was heard, I believe it was reported out favorably, and now we're just waiting to go through the rest of the legislative process. And finally, speaking of bargaining units, in the last two weeks, we've had, I think, four bargaining sessions with four of our unions whose contracts are up, so it's been keeping us relatively busy. And that's my report.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, I'm going to call it close enough to 7:10 for our first hearing. Okay, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 18th, 2015, at 7:10 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room at Town Hall on the application of Seventh Settlement South LLC under Section 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws for a full liquor license transfer from 535-537 Mass Ave. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Do we have representatives, the applicants? Do you guys just want to come sit in these chairs up here?
Sure.
Okay. I'd have to pull over an extra one. All right. Thank you, Lisa. And so just ask that you speak into the microphones and just press a button to turn it on, and if you could just introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cheryl Gould. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Seventh Settlement South LLC, and these are the principals, brothers Matthew and Peter Henry, both longtime Acton residents. As you know, the liquor license had been issued to the company 525-535, I think, Mass Avenue, at the premises that are being renovated for a new restaurant business. And the gentleman in front of you, Seventh Settlement South, has received a lease to occupy those premises and to retrofit it. And I'm going to let them explain what they're doing because it's an interesting new business in town.
Thank you, Selectmen. My name is Peter Henry. We are a active brew pub and we have a brewery and a farm-to-table restaurant in Dover, New Hampshire. My brother Matthew, myself, and our youngest brother Josh, we all graduated from AB between the years of '90 and '97, and our parents still live here in West Acton. I actually live in Boxborough now. And our youngest brother is the master brewer up at Seventh Settlement in Dover, New Hampshire, where we're very proud to say that in July, the issue of New Hampshire Magazine will be coming out, and we won Best New Restaurant in the State of New Hampshire from the voters in New Hampshire Magazine. So we are right now in the process, we've got our building permit from the town, and we are about to begin formal fit-out within the premises for a 10-barrel brewery and currently an 80-seat farm-to-table restaurant.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Janet?
I'm navigationally challenged. Could you tell me where exactly you are? I know, you know, the whole complex involving...
Mathias.
Yeah, Mathias, but I'm not sure which, is this the new building that's going?
Yes, ma'am. The new building, so if you're looking directly at the new building on the far-right side, the side that looks like a barn, where actually be occupying 5,000 interior square feet of that, of the barn on the first floor, and then also have the front patio there as well.
Okay, and I understand from, we had in our packet some information that you're still working with, I guess, the health department about, I don't, making sure that you have, you have the proper qualifications. I think that that whole building is served by a large, private septic system, so, and whenever there's a restaurant, obviously, you have certain needs, and so they probably want to make sure that there's sufficient capacity for that purpose, but...
Yes, we've been in front of the Board of Health already, and they've approved us based on our water records from our existing restaurant for an 80-seat restaurant in that location. For our brewery, we are right now having the engineering done on a tight tank system, so none of the brewing effluent will actually be discharged into the septic system. It'll all be held in a separate tight tank, which will be pumped separately, so it will not occupy anything with regards to the septic. And that's all been approved by, currently, it's been approved by our landlord, but the tight tank and its engineering and the fee have to go in front of the Board of Health, Board of Health before we can get that finalized and approved, and we're in the process of engineering that right now.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like a very exciting venture. I mean, you, I'm, on the end of town where I live, there's a brew pub, and it's terribly popular, with parking spread out onto the street sometimes, including during the week, so anyhow, I think you'll probably find a very welcoming audience, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ching Tsang, any questions? Okay. So I assume you guys have a liquor license at your restaurant in New Hampshire?
Yes, ma'am.
And have there been any issues with that at all? No, nothing there?
No.
Okay, great. And how long, how many years have you run that?
That restaurant, it's almost 19 months now that they've, that we've been open in Dover, New Hampshire.
Oh, great, okay. And so the, I assume the brewery part, you're making beer to sell at the restaurant, are you also bottling, and do you sell that outside as well, in stores and stuff, or?
So we have, so we're interesting, we're what's called a community-supported brewery, a CSB, so you could think of it like a community-supported agriculture?
Okay.
Where people can buy in a share?
Oh.
And you can actually get a growler a month, or growler, or a keg share, and you can take beer off the premises. Within the Massachusetts AVCC, the brew pub license, so a pub brewery license actually gives us the right legally to distribute to wholesalers, to wholesalers of bottles and cans. It's not our intent right now to do that because of the size of the production facility will really just service the restaurant and the brewery itself. We find up at our restaurant and brewery in New Hampshire right now, our current production has trouble keeping up with our demand. So our expectation right now is that everything that's brewed on premises will probably be sold on premises, although legally, based on the brew pub license, we would be allowed to, for example, sell at Red White and Brew, or at Idlewild, or something like that, if we could make arrangements with those wholesalers.
Great. And it, sometimes we've had restaurants in the past provide us with a copy of their serving policies for servers and stuff. Would you guys be willing to do that? I don't know if you have them developed yet, or...
We do, and we'd be happy to share that.
Yeah, if you could just give a copy to Lisa, then we just have it on file.
Okay.
It's a good thing for us to have.
I do not have a copy with me this evening, but I, if you have an email address and you'd like me to send it tonight, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, great, excellent. I don't think I have any other questions, anybody else? Okay, can we get a motion then? Oh, right, any comments, I always forget, any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, now can we have a motion?
Move to approve the transfer.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you for your time.
And when are you hoping to open? Read that question.
I think there's a change of manager in front of you too. Might I, might I ask that you vote that as well? I think it was, I think...
You don't have to do it, okay. Okay, thank you.
That is a fantastic question. Perhaps, I've got a meeting with my general contractor tomorrow at 6:30, if you'd like to join. You can help me strong our management.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I'll just drive by it, and I'm sure we'll see you as I come out. All right, good luck, and thank you.
We hope to see you.
Thank you, welcome to town.
Okay, we're running a little early, but I think that our next group is here, so I'm going to invite you guys up. Our 7:20 hearing is with Girl Scout troop number 72053, so if you guys would like to come up. And I don't know the best way, if you want to all huddle around the table, okay. Yeah, that's great. You can pull up chairs or... She's a maybe, but probably no. Yeah. Okay, and just hit the circle button, it'll turn on your mic. Okay, do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Our names are Sarah, Lindsay, Grace, Megan, and Bridgette.
We are here to explain the bronze award.
We are here to explain the bronze award.
A bronze award is the highest award available to junior scouts. It is an award to help our community in some way and make a lasting impact.
We decided to do a bronze award this year because we thought it would be fun. We wanted to help people and do something different from everything else we have done.
As a part of earning the bronze award, we also had to do a journey. A journey is a smaller effort, but also for the community. We painted the green room at Nara Park for the stage area.
We learned about needs in the community by talking to different organizations and selectmen. We chose a bronze award project that seemed to have the most needs and something we would be able to do. We all gave ideas. We narrowed it down to two and then voted as a troop.
Our project was to cook a meal for the seniors, also known as elders. We made a meal for the seniors because they do not eat a healthy meal when they're alone, so we wanted to cook for them. A senior is a person older than 65.
We heard that the seniors did not have enough money or ability to make food for themselves, and when they do, they don't always make a good meal. We knew they needed help.
We met with Sharon at the Council of Aging. She showed us around the kitchen and the senior center. She helped coordinate the sign-up process for the dinner.
We did this project because we thought it would be nice to cook a meal for the seniors. They usually cook their own meal, and some elders live far away from their grandchildren and rarely see children at all, so we thought it would be nice to cook a meal and talk with them.
To prepare for the dinner, we spoke to a nutritionist from Minuteman. We also spoke to a person from the Acton Board of Health. We went to local stores and asked for food donations.
We spoke to three seniors at the Acton Council of Aging. We asked them what they would want to eat. We made posters and put them up to advertise for the dinner.
We decided on an Italian dinner. We cooked spaghetti, a spaghetti dinner, pastas, meatballs, salad, and homemade garlic bread. We also brought homemade desserts.
We assigned each of ourselves to a table to help clean up, and if the seniors needed more of something, we would help them with it. We had a helper for each table and introduced ourselves before the dinner.
We served dinner for about 40 people. We made the elders happy. They were smiling, they clapped for us, and gave us flowers.
We could, we put up cards to say thank you on the tables. We also sent thank you notes to the stores.
We learned a lot of things while doing this project. As a troop and as individual Girl Scouts, we learned that we like to cook. We learned how to make homemade garlic bread. We learned that seniors like salad. We learned good design elements and how to make the tables look good.
We learned that it was better working together on certain things like cleaning the lettuce. You need to clean and then shake. We learned how to make a dinner.
We learned that we needed to wear gloves when serving food.
What I learned, oh.
What I learned while doing this project was teamwork. I couldn't believe we accomplished, accomplished so much just with teamwork. What you can do is try making a change in Acton.
We learned to serve food in a line and not to overwhelm that, and not to have it to be too crowded.
We learned a lot about nutrition and how to properly wash our hands.
We learned that helping people makes us feel good and pride in what we do in Girl Scouts.
We learned that planning is hard because we got a little bored sometimes. Also, if you feel nervous, that's okay, just stick up your chin and grin.
Here are some of our ideas of ways that you can also help seniors in our community. Help shovel driveways, bring in mail, create blizzard boxes in the winter, or check on them to make sure they are okay.
The seniors said they really liked the dinner and wanted to know if we would do it again. They do not always have family living close to them. Providing meals to them at the seniors' center also helps them get out of the house.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you guys very much. Does anybody have any questions, Janet?
Well, thank you very much. That was a very good example of wonderful collaboration, just sharing two mics among all of you. If we tried to do that on this board, I think that we would probably come to fisticuffs, but, in any event, what is a blizzard box? I'm sorry for not being current on, if it's something new.
It's when you bring unperishable food that's frozen and put it in a box, and you usually write a note, or draw a picture, and you give it to, and you mail it to the seniors or give it to them.
Is it a surprise? Because I've heard of things like that, where you, you go to the door and you leave a little note, and they, or is it, they know who you are, the...
I'm not sure about that. They're kind of, when it's too snowy for them to get out of the house, go shopping, so they kind of have a ready-made meal for them.
That's a, that's a great idea, no? That's wonderful what you've done, and, and I'm glad that you're getting an early start on learning how to cook. If some of you haven't done so already, it's a very important skill. I have people my age, women, who never learned how to cook, who fortunately married men, who happen to like to cook, and that's a big thing now, men liking to cook, and the wives are very lucky, so anyhow, but thank you very much.
Ching Tsang, any questions?
Yes. What was the most challenging portion of the experience for each of you?
Probably agreeing with each other, because it took us quite a long time, a couple of months, to agree on what we were going to be doing for this project.
Also, we had to wait a really long time, and it got a little boring.
Good.
And also, planning, we had to plan, and we had to go out and ask, like, the stores. So we had a lot of planning, and that was, kind of, got a little boring.
Good skill. Well, thank you guys, this was great. So my question is, what, what sort of next do you, are there more projects that you're planning to do in town, or is there something that happens? What are the next steps for your bronze award?
We're probably going to do more badges and maybe work on the silver award next year when we're cadets.
Oh, great.
And also, we have to send in an essay to see if we qualified for the bronze award, so we'll send, we try to essay about what we did and how we did it to Girl Scouts, and they'll decide if we get the bronze award.
Okay, great, good. Well, keep us updated, I'd like, love to hear if you, you get it. And thank you so much, and I just want to say you guys did a great job. It's hard to present in front of all of these people, so it was really wonderful. And you can see yourselves on TV, on, if you go to Acton TV, I think it's .org, or just Google Acton TV, and you'll be able to watch it on demand, so you can show all of your friends. Um, so are there any questions for the Girl Scouts from the audience?
I have a comment.
Sure, Sharon.
Hi, I'm Sharon McCurio, the Acton Council on Aging Director, and I just wanted to say what a wonderful group of girls we worked with, really fantastic and dedicated. They did so much work for this project, and the seniors thoroughly enjoyed it. And not only the girls, but their parents, very involved and very hands-on, so thank you for what you did for us.
Okay, well, on behalf of the town, thank you all so much for coming tonight, and good luck with the rest of your bronze award, and hopefully we'll hear that you get it soon. Okay, we're a little too early for 7:35, so why don't we do the consent agenda? So I'll read these, if anybody has anything they want to hold, just please say hold. Number seven, 2015 West Acton Farmer's Market License. Number eight, Water District Filtration Plant Industrial Discharge Operation and Maintenance Rates. Number nine, Committee Appointment Kathleen Hudson, Full Member, Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. Number 10, Committee Appointment Connie Ingram, Full Member, Cemetery Commission. Number 11, Request for Refund Building Department Building Permit Application for Three Concorded Number 12, One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License Amy Faust, Exchange Hall, June 27, 2015. Number 13, One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License Asako Takuchi, Nara Park, July 2, 2015. Number 14, One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License Linda Anderson, Exchange Hall, June 6, 2015. Number 15, One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License Dagmi Minase, Nara Park, May 30, 2015. Number 16, Outdoor Bake Sale, Girl Scouts, Acton Memorial Library, May 30, 2015. Number 17, Change in Operating Hours, Not Your Average Joes. Number 18, Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Christopher Norton and Mark Benati, May 30, 2015, and that is actually going to be Ching Tsang, correct?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Number 19, Accept Gift Recreation Department, Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare, a gift of $500 to support Acton's Independence Day Celebration. And number 20, Request to Dispose of Obsolete Materials, Acton Memorial Library. Okay, excellent, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. We are still a little early. Steve, do you want to do the Regional Housing Service Officer, IMA?
As many of you know, the town became a member of the regional housing service, service organization three years ago, I think, and we're members along with Concord, Sudbury, Lexington, Weston, I think that's it at the moment. And in essence, the regional housing service organization helps with the monitoring of affordable units in the town, helps set up lotteries for, for people to take advantage of the affordable housing units, and, and just make sure, and keeps track of our units so as we work towards our 10% goal. In front of you this evening is a request to amend the inter-ministerial agreement to add the, the town of Burlington as a member of the RHSO. A few weeks ago, the, the member-town managers got together, I think we're all in agreement that Burlington would be a good addition to the group, and probably would be as large as the RHSO would want to get, and any, any other communities may want to start thinking about forming their own. Currently, the RHSO is housed in the, in the land use department at, in the town of Concord on Kai's Road. My understanding is, once 37 Knox Trail, et cetera, is resolved, they may be moving into, into that, into that office for, for their, their housing. And kind of on a side note, they are, RHSO is now live on their website, provides all kind of information for first-time home buyers and things like that about, about housing in, in the region. And it'd be my recommendation the board sign the agreement.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Janet?
Move to approve the proposed amendment to include Burlington as a member of the RHSO.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, excellent. Too many things on here right now. Okay. I'm going to call it close enough to 7:35, and just read this really slowly. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 18th, 2015, at 7:35 p.m., continued from May 4th, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of National Grid for an installation and maintenance of approximately 135 feet of two-inch gas main, Winchester Drive, from the existing two-inch gas main at House Number Five, Easterly, to the House Number Three for a new gas service. The application-accompanied plans can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Do we have a representative from National Grid?
My name is Dennis Regan, and I'm the permanent representative from National Grid. I understand there were some questions that were asked at the last meeting. I spoke with a gentleman on the phone, Mr. Rosen, I believe I answered his questions. I walked him through the process for having a, to get a gas main extended to his house for a service. And I also, he wanted to know some information about our backfilling and our restoration. I answered those questions, and he asked me a question about a rectifier. And I reached out to our corrosion department, and I was told by the head of our corrosion department that all coated steel mains in the area are protected by magnesium anodes, so there's no rectifi- So there's no rectifiers anywhere near where this main extension is planned.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions, I can, I can answer them.
So first, any questions from the board? Yes, Janet?
Yeah, I, I think that the principal questions from our last meeting related to the Acton Water Supply District's position or whether, whether or not they were aware of all the issues, somebody had raised some questions, in fact, it was Barry, on behalf of the Acton Water Supply District. And it was at, because of that, that we decided we would continue the hearing to give the Water District a chance to weigh in on the issues and make sure that the Water District was comfortable with your proceeding of obviously conferring with them as you need to. But, and, and we have a written statement from the district manager for the Water Supply District saying that they don't have any issues. So, so basically from our perspective, the questions that we had that caused us to continue got answered, so.
So any questions from the audience? Yes, Herman. Herman, I thought you were moving. What is?
I'm still here.
Not yet.
The question, the question I have is who is funding this? Is this funded by the National Grid, Grid folks or is this funded by the residents of the neighborhood?
Is what, is what, what are you going for?
Is the extension, the, the work done to, to install the extension down the street, is that done, is that the expense of National Grid or the neighborhood?
It's, it's being paid.
Yes, sorry.
I think I explained this on the phone, but National Grid, because of deregulation statutes, which is from the state, we are not allowed to speculate. So this particular main extension, as in any other, in any other city or town in the city, they, they work out an arrangement with the owner of the property to pay to have this main extended in the service. In some cases, neighbors might get together and share the cost. But as, if we, we cannot put gas mains in because if they go unused, we have to pay the cost back, it has to go back to the rate payer. So there's no speculation and the customer pays for this main extension.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, then can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the request to extend the gas main as described in the notice that you read earlier.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a little time before 7:45. Was there anything in the selectmen's reports that people had questions on or that they wanted to bring up? No? All right. Well, why don't, I guess we can start the land use director discussion. We'll just have to take a pause at 7:45 to go over that. So pulling this out, as everybody knows, we approved a new position for a Land Use and Economic Development Director at annual town meeting. And Steve had created a job description that was floated around a few months back during budget talks. And when it came up at town meeting and after town meeting, there were some questions about that and the nature of the job description and suggestions for modifications or improvements. So we sent out a request to all of the various boards and committees in town, asking for any input that they might have. We heard back from, I think it was about six or seven boards and three different citizens, three or four different citizens with a variety of comments and, and suggestions. And then we invited folks here tonight as well to add any. So before we do that, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you to everybody who participated. And then before we open it for comments, I'm hoping that first, people who have not already sent comments in would go first and that we try to keep the comments around three minutes, just so it's not, you know, a hugely lengthy thing. And then I will turn it over to Steve for a couple of comments.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think the first comment, or several comments I want to make is first of all, it is a draft, so we are trying to finalize it. One of our crucial timetables is the fact that Doug Haley is retiring on Halloween. And we'd certainly like somebody in place for this position to help, help with the recruitment and, and filling of Doug's position because I think as many folks know, Doug is a bit unusual as a health director. And I don't mean that personality-wise, I mean, skill-wise in that not only does he wear traditional health directors hat, he's been involved with transportation, he's been involved with sewers, et cetera. So, and, and, and one could argue all of those functions that he has done, be it transportation, be it, be it sewers, are connected to land use, are connected to economic development. So, you know, how we go about filling that position is, is, is very crucial. So with that being said, as, as, as one of the Girl Scouts said when they were here is that one of the most difficult things they had encountered, and I think it is true in life, is to get agreement on anything. And, you know, clearly, we, we've seen a lot of comments and a lot of constructive criticism over the last week to two weeks about the position. And just a couple of comments I just wanted to make before, before you open up the floor, Katie, is, is one, I think it's important to realize that a, a job description really needs to be somewhat broad-based because obviously as, as time goes on, as situations are encountered, there needs to be some flexibility so that things can be dealt with accordingly. And just as, kind of jokingly, but if you look at the town charter, under the job description of the town manager, it only has 11 issues. And, and one issue obviously being to perform any other duties as directed. So that is always the catch-all for any, any, any position. So when we started to put together this job description, we wanted to capture a lot of things. You know, obviously the importance of coordinating all the land use functions in town and also being sensitive, listening to our, our businesses and trying to build a better relationship with our businesses, which we've been criticized about in the past. And, and, and having a person who can work to streamline our permitting processes because in a lot of ways, our, our various departments are kind of like stovepipes and we want to make sure that we knock down the barriers and that everybody communicates and everybody is cross-trained. So it is a very big job. There, there's no question about it. And I think one thing that everyone needs to understand is that there are some guidance that we all receive and, and part of that guidance will be coming through the 2020 plan. The other guidance is our annual goal setting with the Board of Selectmen. Every year, the goals, the selectmen set goals and as is the case in most organizations, those goals trickle downwards. So they trickle to me, they trickle to the department heads so that we all work towards goals that are mutually beneficial to, to the community and to our organization. So, you know, it, it is important to understand that, that the goals are what really drives us and that will drive this position, it drives my position, et cetera. So I guess that's all I need to say for the time being.
Thank you. Okay, so I will open up to the floor now and again, just preferably if you haven't sent in comments first. Steve, I think you did send in comments, but unless you're speaking for yourself, all right.
I don't think I sent any comments, but listen, I just wanted to emphasize a couple of points that I think are important. We all know that we started this as two distinct positions and it didn't look like it would fly. So we merged them. The difficulty, I think, that, that came up for us, or a number of us on, on the Finance Committee and on the Economic Development Committee, is that the economic development function, which is part of this job, seems to, at least in the language, the weight of the language of the job description, seems to have been somewhat submerged. We think that it's very important that somebody be on the team who understands how economic development works in the real world. Somebody who's got experience in understanding how a piece of real estate gets financed, how it gets leased, how it gets built, what the timeframes have to be and so on. That's not something that you find as a skillset among people that are traditionally employed in town halls across the Commonwealth. It's more commonly found in the private sector where people have to rise or fall by whether or not they can get a project financed and leased and put up on time and be profitable. That's an element which I think is crucial because otherwise it's very professorial and we're very supervisory and we're very theoretical and so on. But on the ground, where the deals get done, you need to understand what the nitty-gritty is. And one of the concerns that I've had about some of the processes, particularly with Kelly's Corner, has been that there's not really been any meaningful contact with the real estate development world. And so repeatedly, we ask questions like, have we been in touch with the Real Estate Department at Stop &amp; Shop? They command what happens at Kmart. Have we been in touch with the Real Estate Department at Verizon? The two of them are the 100% corner in Kelly's Corner. And if we don't understand where they're coming from and where they want to go and how much they're willing to work with us, then everything we do, as far as Kelly's Corner is concerned, is, is just airy-fairy kind of theoretical stuff. So I think that the, the move to put a, a professional in the equation who understands how to do economic development in terms of deal-by-deal on the street was a great move in the right direction. To the extent that we blur that and get off into administration and supervision and so on, we're creating something that more resembles an assistant town manager position. I think we need to be more tactical and less strategic about it. And I think those views are generally shared by my colleagues on the Finance Committee and on the Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Let's do one more before.
Now, I did submit these just as I walked into the meeting. So Jeff Kleimer just provided some comments on, on behalf of the Open Space Committee. And I also provided some comments. RAC did not have a meeting to approve comments, but I included a couple of items that RAC has talked about for, with respect to potential future needs of the town. So I, I think, and, and I think from the standpoint of the land use part of this, I think one of the concerns that Open Space Committee had was that there wasn't any, any mention of environmental concerns, there wasn't any mention of open spaces as part. Now, I realize land use is a very comprehensive term and it's a broad term, but we just felt that given the importance of open space in Acton, that it would be worthwhile to mention that. So in the comments that we've made, we've just added to some of the words to expand upon that. I think beyond that, we did include a little bit more about balance. You know, obviously economic development's important as well as land use and making sure that those decisions are balancing the needs of the businesses with the needs of the communities. We also, we also wanted to mention one other thing that's obviously very important to Acton, and I realize it doesn't, that there is a separate Acton Water District, but just water resources are very important to the town and that that figures into land use as well. So those are, are some of the key comments. There's a couple of little things that we changed. There was some disagreement on whether, well, the Historical District Commission being a regulatory board rather than a non-regulatory board. And then a couple of comments on stormwater. You know, certainly, we think from a RAC perspective that eventually we're going to need a stormwater utility. So having some background in that would be, would be helpful as well. So those are, those are the general comments and they're all submitted and thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to pause just to do our 7:45 hearing and then I'll open it back up. So the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 18, 2015 at 7:45 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall on the application of Swanson Buick GMC Truck for an amendment with their Class I Dealer's License at Sudbury Road, Lot 1, Acton, Mass. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is there somebody here? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm John Swanson, General Manager of Swanson Buick GMC. And we're here to try and amend our license to include 45 Powder Mill Road at the same time.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Nope?
I had something and then now I can't for the life of me remember what it was.
So I started to read it.
Give me a second. No problem.
I think you're hogging all of them.
I mean, nothing is jogging my memory, so.
Okay. So no comments? Any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, then can I have a motion, please? Got to be one of the two of you.
Yeah, move to approve the, the amendment of the Class I Dealer's License at Sudbury Road, Acton, Mass. to include, I guess, 45, 45, what is it? 45 Sudbury Road anyhow.
45 Powder Mill, I think.
Powder Mill.
The parking, I think it's the proposed parking.
Yeah, Powder Mill, 45 Powder Mill.
45 Powder Mill Road, sorry.
Please hold right the right.
I know where it is and I think, okay, yeah, it's Sudbury.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you so much. All right, now we can open it back up for comments related to the Land Use and Economic Development Director. This man.
Hi, Deborah Sines. Do I just say where I live? I never know what I do with these things.
Your name's fine. I know where you live, so.
Great. So I'm speaking as myself, even though Green Acton did submit some comments. So one is a question, which is, all the stuff that came in the comments or letters that were sent to the, the selectmen, are you guys going to be discussing that stuff tonight or not?
So I think we're going to discuss it a little bit. To be honest, next steps are really that, you know, Steve has seen all the comments and will hear the comments tonight and then take it back and make modifications to the job description, sort of as he sees, he sees fit or as the selectmen may or may not recommend tonight. But we're not bringing the job description back for another hearing or anything of that nature.
Okay, okay. So as myself then, let me just say, if I were to say anything about this, I think it is that, you know, when 2020 met the other note, we were sort of jocularly saying, this person should be the COO of the master plan. And I was like, oh, right, that's a really good idea. So I just want to say that I think the overarching guiding parameters that should shape how this person operates should be the master plan. And that will incorporate a lot of the missing pieces that people have commented about. That's all.
Thank you, Deborah. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate, just for the record and for those who might be watching on television attentively, to, to make the, to put on the record what the Finance Committee's motion was?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so we wrote a letter explaining the motion, which obviously I will not belabor, you know, you with, you can read it. But the motion that was passed by the Finance Committee, again, just for the record, we moved that we direct the chairman to respond to town manager, the chairman being the chairman of the Finance Committee, that, to respond to town manager that reflects the sense of our committee, which is that the position description should be scrapped and the emphasis in the description should reflect a true 50-50 split, land use and economic development. The motion was seconded and voted unanimously to support. So again, I, I know you all have read that and I, I'm doing this only to put it on the record. And for those who might be listening and wondering what, what the position of the Finance Committee is, now they know.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything substantive to add. My first try at modifying the job description was I tweaked it in all the various headings. Then I attended the 2020 meeting on Wednesday and received a copy of the letter and just what Deborah said, it completely, they completely summed it up. I hadn't been thinking about the master plan. I was thinking more about the Open Space and Recreation Plan and other town planning documents. But when they summed it up by saying what Deborah just said, the COO of Acton 2020 sort of says it all, I completely personally support that.
Great.
It's very well said. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to say thank you to 2020. I think it was really helpful to bring a bunch of boards together, you know, and, and try to have a number of boards commenting at once. Like I mentioned, we received comments from about six or seven. Anybody else who wants to make comments tonight? This man.
So my name's Kat Hudson, I'm the Vice Chair of 2020, and I don't want to make comments specifically about this, because we wrote, I thought, a very well-drafted letter to explain our view on how we thought this position could be better captured in a posting out to potential candidates. But Deborah may have already asked the question, I really want to get the sense from the Board of Selectmen what your sense is, given the feedback you received. And I wondered if you'd be willing to share.
Yeah, I think we're going to do that once we're done with everybody's comments from the audience. We just want to hear from everybody else first and then sort of.
Do that tonight with everybody here?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's great. So that's what I, and then the only other thing that I wanted to impress, that I don't think necessarily came out of our letter or that's come out of anybody's comments, that Steve, when you mentioned, you know, that a job description is broad-based and you don't necessarily need to put in a job description what you know what will come naturally based on the goals of the town, I do think that what you put out attracts what you're looking for. So what I'm saying is, as it's drafted now, it's not very exciting, so I don't expect to get a lot of candidates who I think would be a good match for what the town might envision for this position. So in that vein, I think the job description really needs to be reworked so that you are attracting great candidates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Okay, anybody else? Excellent. Okay, comments from Selectmen? Either way. Janet?
Okay. I feel that this whole process has gotten really far afield from where we started, which was with two positions for a land use director and an economic director, both very distinct positions with distinct responsibilities. My issue with this job description, and I understand that it is merging the functions of the two positions, is that it starts to become very catch-all. And yeah, it's necessarily general to encompass a lot of possibilities that we don't want to specify, because we'll end up excluding something that might, we might determine later will be useful. But what has happened, and my impression from getting all of these statements, I think the only, the only comments that I've seen that kind of focused on, sort of more on the original positions were from the FinCom, but everybody else, basically, it was kind of like a wish list of things that people wanted the position to do. And I think part of the problem is that the current description is so broad, it, you know, I don't know who's going to do this job, because it, you know, it can be very demanding. Basically, the person will be like the second town manager. That's, that's my concern. And when I was at the FinCom's meeting, there was one comment, and I think it was Margaret, she said, you know, they're so different. If you want to keep both positions, have you considered splitting them? Having two part-timers, it just, you know, just because they are very different, there were pretty strong opinions on that committee about the fact that for economic development, you really need to have somebody who's going to know the market, as Mr. Tindall was saying, and is going to be a real go-getter, and not just an administrator. And for land use, which FinCom doesn't support, but which I have always supported from the outset, I think you do need somebody who can kind of herd cats, because it goes along with the process of trying to streamline our permitting process, which has kind of been disjointed. And so I've always understood what the point was of having the land use director. And I was fine with economic development, because I really thought that we needed to charge that up. But, you know, and I think that frankly, complying or following the goals in 2020 is something that everybody, all the, all the boards and the town staff are supposed to be paying attention to. I think that there's a risk, if you have somebody responsible, principally responsible, for making sure that the whole town is complying with the 2020 goals, or is complying with the 2020 goals with regard to land use and economic development, that person is really going to be like another, another director, okay? Another, another town manager. And, you know, that's, I, that's why I keep thinking we need to go back to what we started out with, because I, I don't know if this job description is going to get us the people that I think we had in mind way back when we started talking about this. And anyhow, but, and I realize that some towns have used a description very much like this to have a combined position. I actually would be interested in knowing how that's worked out. And there are some things in here that concern me, like the requirement of a master's in planning, and with no specification of any other higher level degree, because there are other degrees that might be useful, so. But I, yeah, I think that I really would like this input process to end now. I think that it's really now up to the board, and really, that you, as a town manager, to work on, figure out if this is going to work the way it is, or you can tweak it. But honestly, I would be very leery about trying to incorporate all of the suggestions that are made, because a lot of them are diametrically opposed. That, you know, you will end up with everything but the kitchen sink and the kitchen sink in the job description, and it will be far too broad to capture anybody that would make anybody in this town happy, including the Selectmen and all the people who have just weighed in, so. That's, that's, well, that's it. That, you know, I might have something else to say, but that's basically where I'm coming from. I think that we, we do need to sort of roll back and sort of think about what we were trying to accomplish, because I don't know that this job description is going to do it. And, yeah.
Jing Sun?
So I'm going to agree with a lot of what Janet said, so I'm not going to restate everything that she said. I would like to add, though, that I think the fact that a lot of the suggestions that did come in, that were so diametrically opposed to each other is telling, in the sense that the, the job description is laid, is laid out at sort of a strategic level, which I think works to a certain extent, but I do agree with the suggestion that came out, that perhaps there needs to be a more tactical focus and a more understanding of what exactly this position is going to be doing on a day-to-day basis. And it, once you have that settled, perhaps that will allow you to better focus on the skills and qualifications necessary to accomplish those day-to-day tasks. I do agree with the FinCom's suggestion that the economic aspect of this position seems to be a little bit subsumed, and I would also like to see that highlighted a little bit more. I do agree that the land use portion is important, and it's important to keep track of all of that stuff. But I also do, you know, like the FinCom and like Janet has said, do believe in the importance of having someone to help with economic development. And so I guess that pretty much sums up my comments. So I think that the best thing to do would just be to take a look again at exactly how the job description is laid out at both a strategic, strategic and tactical level. And in, and in this case, it may be that tactics define strategy instead of vice versa, as is usual.
Great, thank you. So I'll say, you know, I read through all the comments as they came in, and, you know, again, as my colleagues mentioned, a lot of them offer sort of opposing views, which is tough. And as Steve and the Girl Scouts mentioned, you know, you're not going to be able to please everybody. And, you know, I just want to sort of remind folks, we're not hiring another or a new town manager. This is a person that will report to the town manager and who will be working towards the goals of our master plan and towards the Board of Selectmen's goals. And so I think there were some useful comments from all of the different boards. I think combining them is going to be, you know, a little tricky, and I, when we see the final position, their job description, it's not going to please everybody, and probably it's going to please nobody, because it's one of those unfortunate things that, you know, in doing this, it's not going to meet everybody's needs or wants. Because again, you know, I think if we did that, it would just be come too broad, and we don't want to make the job descriptions so specific and have so many requirements that nobody is going to qualify for this position. I mean, I think we're used to people, you know, again, bringing up Doug, he's our Board of Health Director. And if you look at the Board of Director, of Health Directors in different towns, very few of them do what Doug does. And so I think we're used to having these, these kind of people that are able to, you know, go far beyond their job descriptions and work on a lot of issues and be very dynamic. And so our expectations in Acton are high, and while we do want to attract those kinds of people, we also don't, you know, we want to make sure we're not looking for a unicorn. And I have to say, I disagree with splitting up the positions. I think we had this discussion back, you know, again, in December and January, when we were going through the budgeting process, and there was a reason for bringing them together. I mean, there were multiple reasons, some of them budgetary, and some of them because we had seen, you know, what's happening in other towns, that they are really looking at this as a position that, that has a lot of overlaps and that those are issues that should be thought of in concert, and so it makes sense to have one person, you know, in, in charge of them. So I think it was right for us to bring it together, and I think we should keep it as one job. You know, and again, there are towns out there hiring for that position or have recently hired for that position, so we know that there are people that are qualified to do it available, so I don't have concerns there. But overall, I mean, I, you know, I want to thank people for their input, and then just again, say it's sort of up to Steve. This is a person that ultimately is working for you and reporting to you day-to-day, so it's got to be somebody that works, you know, that the job position, the job description position works for you. So those are sort of my comments. I don't know if there were follow-ups from anybody else.
Yeah, can I add one more, one thing? Just on a strict practical level, I think that the, the job description is a little bit long, and what I would do in your situation is I would, is I would create a list of the top five things I expect this person to be doing on a day-to-day basis, sort of what I expect from them, what I expect them to handle, and, and take it from there. Because I think that in my experience in, in sort of looking at job descriptions, there are oftentimes, obviously, extended bullets, but for the most part, the best job descriptions that I've writ, that I've seen range between, range to about close to that range of sort of core responsibilities, five core responsibilities that this person has. And so looking at that, I think that's often a good place to start at creating sort of a position and then what you expect them to do.
Great. Yes.
Kat Hudson, Chair, Vice Chair of Acton 2020. Can I just ask one question? One of the, and this is getting very down, little details, but it's kind of bothered me, and I just want to, it might help me understand, because I don't think I was here at the beginning when Janet says, when we had this discussion early on, we agreed that the position would be X, Y, and Z. I don't know what that is. I would love that to be brought back up, but when it says, able to sit at a computer for long stretches of time, I guess I'm just trying to understand, from the town's perspective, when I think of a land use and an economic development director, I think of a person that's not in this building a whole hell of a lot. I more align myself with the feeling of Doug Tindall. That person is out there in the town and on the streets, in both. I think those two positions can be melded quite nicely, and I do think it's finding a very unique person, and that's when I said, if you craft the job description well, you might find that person, you might really excite somebody who, you know, surprisingly enough, possesses both sets of skills. It's going to be rare, but it was hard for me to imagine that there's been vision behind the position when one of the things says that they can be able to sit at a computer for long stretches of time. So I would like to understand your vision. I don't, do I say Mr. Town Manager? I don't know. Steve, I just know Steve from your blog, of, of this person. Like, I would love you very informally to give us a vision of this person that's going to be reporting to you, if you don't mind.
Right. Well, I think, first of all, you should not get, hang up about the physical requirements of the job. I mean, you kind of legally have to put those in, and, you know, it isn't, you know, is an executive job, there are, there is sitting, there is computer work. I think that my vision of the job, you know, frankly, is, is a person that I view as an ombudsman, ombudsperson, if that's correct, that basically makes sure our permitting process is functioning correctly, that our land use departments are working together, that there are no snags, no issues with economic development, understands the business community, understands maybe what the problems are in our bylaws as it relates to business, that he or she can champion into zoning changes. You know, I don't disagree. I think that person, especially the first year or two, is really going to have to be out of the office, meeting not only the business community, all the various boards, all the various actors that, that are involved with, with land use, economic development in town. I mean, it is a big job, and I do think the right person is probably out there. One of the things that Peter thought I'd be asked tonight, but nobody is asked, I'll ask it to myself, is, is what, what is the selection process going to look like? And what I envision is, is doing a thing called an assessment center. And basically, what an assessment center is, is we'd bring in a consultant who has a panel of, of people who are in the field of, of economic development and land use, and we would put candidates through kind of live-action simulated exercises. Because I think, you know, in this day and age, it's not difficult to give a really good interview, but you don't really know how people are going to react, how they're going to think on their feet. So we've used this process with, with, with police chiefs, fire chiefs, where you kind of run them through some scenarios. One scenario, for example, is you give them a whole best of, you give them what they called an in-basket exercise. There's a whole bunch of people to talk to, return phone calls, and they have to prioritize who they're supposed to talk to. And that gets, gets into their process of how do they prioritize things? You know, we run people through scenarios of dealing with an irate citizen, an irate businessperson, and seeing how they think on their feet, how they react to this person, how can, how do they, how do they triage a situation, things like that. So that's what I think we will be doing in terms of that selection. Now, Peter and I have talked, and I'd certainly be open that it's usually a two-day process, even if you only have as few as four candidates, because it is, it is a pretty lengthy process and pretty emotionally draining for the candidates, I might add. But, you know, I would certainly be interested in, and perhaps adding one or two people to observe that are either from Economic Development Committee 2020 or whatever, so they can see the candidates in action and see how they think on their feet as well. But, you know, I, this is a unique position, it's a new position, you know, I'm looking for somebody who can, who can certainly think on their feet, be creative, and basically, more importantly, be a good communicator and understand not only our bylaws, our master plan, but what it's like to do business in the community.
Okay, thank you. And just to sort of answer your question, Kat, about what, you know, what we had talked about before, I mean, originally, when Steve brought this proposal, when you first presented the budget back in December, is it that late? It was two separate positions, but then throughout the process, we talked about combining as one, and that was when this job description first came up. So it's been talked about and out in the public for quite a while, it's just not as many people watch our meetings, perhaps, as, you know, you might imagine. So I think the first time people really ended up hearing about it more was at town meeting. But it, but it has been discussed publicly for, for quite a few months at this point. But, okay, so I'd just like to say thank you again to everybody for your input, and, you know, we'll turn it back to Steve. This will all go back to him to revise the job description, and stay tuned as we, you know, put it out and get some candidates and.
Thank you. I found the comments very helpful, so.
Good. All right, thank you very much. And I think that does it. I think we're good. Yeah. So if we get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?